Head and turn this meeting over to Carrie. But before she starts, I just, I just want to say thank you so very much, Carrie, for providing us the information on the scenarios and for the additional information you sent out today that showed the impact of where the funds would be coming from. So thank you so very much for that. It was extremely helpful. I know that we are still kind of waiting for some information in regards to the school board based on the email that you sent out today. So that might kind of hold up things just for a little bit. But I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting over to you.
Um, so we are missing Scott right now. And I did hit the record button, but I am not sure if we're streaming to YouTube. So I don't know if you want to continue or...
He's going to be here, right, Scott?
I don't know. I reached out to him. I'm assuming he had an emergency and that's why he's not here. But I haven't been able to confirm that.
Okay, so do you, are you trying to say we should probably just wait a little bit just to see?
Can, can we wait maybe five minutes just to see if India or I can get ahold of him? So we can make sure we're recording to YouTube?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor DiLorenzo, your hand is up. You have to unmute yourself. You got to unmute yourself. Yes, sir?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question. If Carrie's recording, is it possible that we could still start? And this could be streamed to the YouTube tomorrow? Is that allowed? Or?
So for some reason, I believe that it has to be, it has to be simultaneously or something like that.
Okay, because I was just going to suggest that we have approximately 19 attendees and we're supposed to have a public hearing. So I wasn't sure how long we could delay.
Right, India. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
India?
Yes, ma'am.
What time is the public hearing?
Six o'clock.
Okay. And no one has been able to get Scott?
No, ma'am. Kind of figure it out myself, honestly.
So I need to be, I need to be upgraded, please, whoever set this up.
Upgraded to...
A host?
I don't even have that capability, Suzette.
Carrie?
She's trying to call somebody, probably. Hold on.
Hi, Suzette. I didn't get ahold of Scott, but Dave is going to try and start the link for us.
Okay, I need to be upgraded to a host, please, so that I can handle the meeting.
Yep.
I'm going to ask all the counselors to unmute yourselves so that I can mute you, please. All counselors, if you can unmute yourself. Counselor Curtin, Counselor Calhoun. Sharon, Hal.
Not a counselor.
I know. Okay, what I'm going to do now is because we should have the public hearing, I'm going to unmute India. India, you got to unmute yourself. And I'm going to ask you to go ahead and start the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. I will read the notice. The legal voters of the town of Bloomfield, Connecticut are hereby warned and notified that a public hearing for the consideration of the revised FY 2020-21 for a budget for the town of Bloomfield for fiscal year 2021 will be held Tuesday, May 19, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. during a conference remote meeting, which is on Zoom right now. Legal voters can submit their questions and comments to the following email address prior to the meeting, which is at budget2021@bloomfieldct.org. An official copy of the said proposed budget will be on file in the office of the town clerk and copies of the condensed version of the proposed revised budget will be available at no cost for general distribution in the office of the town manager. This is dated at Bloomfield, Connecticut on the 11th day of May 2020.
Okay, did we receive any emails, Carrie?
Carrie is probably on, she's on mute, but...
Sorry, I have, I have Scott on the other line. We did receive a couple of questions from, from the host. Let me, do you mind if I... Of course, I can't.
You can just go ahead and read them if it's easier.
Sure. Okay, so question number one is from resident Craig Williams. It, he asks, what is the old and new mill rate and when does it go into effect? The answer to that, the fiscal year 2020 mill rate is 37.46 mils and the mill rate for the upcoming year 2021 is currently in a, currently a work in progress. We have, we have entered the council, the town council deliberations and will be presenting the town council recommended budget on May 28, 2020. The mill rate will go into effect for the July 2020 installment for the 2019 grand list. We received two questions from resident Ed Savage. The first one is, if the pool is closed this summer, what are the residual maintenance costs, the overall budget reduction for leisure service and pool? The, this was answered by the director of leisure service, Dave Malesco. Overall, pool reduction is $89,285, which accounts for reduction in personnel costs, contractual services, and supplies needed. There is no reduction in our admin education as this only accounts for a portion of our admin staff's responsibility. The second question, what portion of cost on the proposed increase in mail-in voting classified as absentee in this year's primary elections is anticipated to come from the state? Will this change also apply to the November elections and might federal funds offset some of the costs of any of these elections? The answer, this is answered by the town clerk, Margaret Phillips, and confirmed by the register of voters. Any absentee balloting above the normal estimate we norm, we normally have, the state will pay for. The state is also paying for postage to mail, mail out applications to all eligible voters. There, they will be paying for a drop box that will be sent to all municipalities for voters to drop their ballots in a secure lockbox so they do not need to come into the building. That's all I have for questions submitted through the budget 2021 email.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, I am not, I didn't see any questions in the Q and A box. Did you see anything, India?
No.
Okay. So... If there, Carrie, are we set with Scott?
I don't think so. If you, can you give me one minute to connect with him? Suzette, can you promote me to a co-host? So I can, he can walk me through it, I think.
Done.
Thank you.
So I'm just waiting to close the public hearing, guys, just to see if she can get this streaming. Counselor Curtin?
I was just saying, I was going to request a recess, but I can't go anywhere, so.
Sorry. You could probably go upstairs. Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. India, seeing that there are no questions in the Q and A box. And I didn't see anyone on our attendees list. Hold on.
I have one question.
What is the town doing as it relates to the sovereignty of Bloomfield? Was somebody saying something?
Oh, that was just Scott talking to Carrie. She had unmuted herself for a minute.
Oh, okay. I'm going to go ahead and unmute the town manager to answer that question.
I don't understand what the question means.
Financial sovereignty.
Financial sovereignty in the interest of its citizens. So, once again, I don't know. I think that will probably be answered when we come up with the budget. What we're trying to do is make sure that we have a fiscally sound budget that helps to alleviate some of the financial pressures from our residents. We do know that our residents have been affected by COVID-19. We do understand that there is record unemployment. They've said that they haven't seen these unemployment numbers since the Great Depression. So we do know that our residents are feeling the financial squeeze, just like everyone else. The council's desire is not to raise taxes this year, but we're also very mindful that we need to make sure that the services that our residents are used to, that we still be able to provide those services at a, at a reasonable level. We're also looking at making sure that our school system has the resources that they need. I'm not quite sure if that answers your question. If not, you can go ahead and ask an additional question. Counselor Merritt?
Yes, I wonder if we were going to go over the Carrie's email to us about details for tonight?
Yes, we are, but we had to get the public hearing out, we had to go through the public hearing first.
Okay, thank you.
Suzette, you already closed it?
I was waiting to see if there was another follow-up question. I'm just trying to make sure that we answer this question properly.
Okay.
Um... So the next question is, why is the school allowed to come to these budget meetings year after year unprepared? I am not able to answer that question. Okay, it is 6:23. Our budget hearing is officially closed. And now, Carrie, are we, are we all set now?
So Scott is on, on his way. So we should be live streaming to YouTube in five minutes and then he will post the public hearing right after it.
Okay.
We still should be in compliance.
Okay, excellent. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, great. So with the last meeting that we had on May 7th, was, or no, May 14th, sorry, was a few takeaways from what was presented before. And I have since updated the scenarios, which I will share with you guys. So you guys all came to the conclusion that we were going to narrow down the scenarios from six to two. Those two scenarios were scenario two and scenario six, which were a no tax increase and Board of Ed receiving a 3% increase. And then scenario six was no, a slight tax decrease and the Board of Ed's receiving 5.1% increase. There was a few adjustments to the, for the both scenarios. The first adjustment was to eliminate the reset of the required OPEP contribution. The, the second kind of revisement was to take out the pre-funding of our medical contribution. And our, the third main adjustment was to have a hiring freeze for, in scenario two is a partial year. It's half the year, six months. And scenario six reflects a full year, $560,000 of hiring freeze. Do you guys have any, any questions on, on scenario two that you'd like to discuss or...
Counselor Merritt?
Thank you. Carrie, the, so scenario two also already includes six-month delay in hiring. In other words, we only hire half of the people. Is that what that means?
That means we'd, all the positions, there are five positions, full-time positions that have been identified as vacant or expected to be vacant by July 1st. We would wait and put those on a freeze until January 1st, and then we'd look to hire them depending on, on the circumstances and COVID and how our expenditures are looking, are looking for at that point.
So actually, that would be less than half, it would be more than half a year that we wouldn't have to pay them salaries. Because by the time we get them hired, it probably be practically the end of the fiscal year. And, and I had the same kind of a question on the capital items, or I don't understand your language there where you talk about available and...
So for the CIP project show, are you talking about?
Yes, it says identified, available, and balanced. What, which numbers are...
So that, the number that's identified is the amount of funding that we have identified as, as possibility to defer. So the highlighted column is $449,000 that we could essentially take from these projects with the understanding that we would have to replenish the majority of them at a later budget year.
Okay, well, I would, I would think that would be something might be desirable to do, but that's not in any of the scenarios.
Right, so Joe, for what is proposed in the current year or fiscal year 2021's budget is, for capital is completely offset by revenue in. So for, for the $449,000 that's been identified, really, the only thing that we can do with it is look at current year expenditures, fiscal year 2020 expenditures, that we can, we can purchase that would decrease fiscal year 2021's budget. That's the only thing we can, we can do with the 459 unless you guys decided that you wanted to increase our, our capital contribution.
That does us absolutely no good budget-wise, because whether you spend this year or next year, it doesn't matter, does it?
Well, so there is, there is a positive. Say, we identified, we took out two police cruisers, right, for $100,000. Those are already included in the scenarios, but we could use the $459,000 to purchase some in the current year. What my thinking was, was with the $449,000 for the Board of Ed to see if they could identify costs in fiscal year 2021, one-time costs that they, they could tell us and essentially we could eliminate in fiscal year 2021, therefore reducing their budget and purchase them in fiscal year 2020's.
Yeah, but that, all that does is spend more money this year and to spend less next year. So it really offsets. I mean, it's, that's money we wouldn't have left over at the end of this year because we spent.
I mean, yes, I understand your, your theory, the residual balance in, for fiscal year 2020 will be going into the general fund assignment, you know? So it's whether or not you guys want to increase the assignment in fiscal year 2021 higher than it already is, or if you want to look at maybe purchasing some goods in fiscal year 2020 to decrease 2021's budget.
So can I just, can I just interrupt for a minute? Because once again, Carrie has posed that question to the town attorney and she has not yet received an answer. So that might not even be a, that might not even be an option for us. So just, you know, instead of us going down that road right now, that might not be an option, so.
Okay, well, it doesn't seem like it's what's an option anyway, so.
Counselor Curtin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Carrie, for putting this together. My question is in regards to, I don't think, I was a little surprised with the approach with half-a-year salary. I thought the directive is, we weren't going to hire anyone this year. I thought that was the consensus across the board. So I think I'm a little confused that we're taking that approach. Because in actuality, I don't think any one of us know exactly what the future entails. We may have to reduce employees, in a sense, if things get really difficult down, down the road. So I think we have to, we have to do with what we have currently in place as far as staff. So I don't think, I think we need to, once again, this is my opinion, but I thought that was the directive from the council with the last communication. So could you tell me what that number is? That half-a-year salary that's still reflected in the budget, please?
So scenario two has half a year, a half a year of hiring freeze, and scenario six has the full year that was, that was requested. I don't, yeah.
Okay, so, so what's that number in scenario two, just for the sake of...
It's 280 in scenario two.
280, okay.
And then in scenario six, it's $560,000.
Okay, okay, so the difference. Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was a little, okay, so that's fine, because that was my, so I'm happy that it's in scenario six, because that's the one that I do agree with. But we can talk about that when we get there. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Carrie, in your opening remarks, you mentioned a communication you had with the Board of Education today. Could you share what that is and perhaps it has an impact on some of the decisions we have to deal with tonight?
Um, sure. I, I just sent an email to Bill Guzman asking, inquiring if the state had given them laptops or Chromebooks. And if so, would that, would that donation affect what they were asking in fiscal year 2021's budget? Because as you guys know, it was brought up at the meeting on last Thursday. You know, why was there a need for Chromebooks? And there was a conversation kind of that ensued after that. So I just asked for clarification on whether or not they did receive Chromebooks and whether, whether or not it had an impact in fiscal year 2021's budget. And if it didn't, why? What was, what's the difference in the, in the purpose of the use of the Chromebooks in 2021 versus what they received from the state?
Thank you.
Counselor Politis?
Hi, Counsel Polis speaking. Just a quick question, Carrie, on the, on to, we're eliminating police cruisers for $100,000. I know the original ask was for four police cruisers. Is this to eliminate all police cruisers or truly?
It eliminates all. Two were previously eliminated in the town manager revised budget, and this will eliminate all of them.
That's what I saw. I was just clarifying. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Merritt?
Getting back, I'm still on the same topic. Basically, in scenario two, then, if we don't start to try to hire any of those missing positions until mid-year, we probably won't spend any money on it on scenario two either. So I don't see why, if we do, it will be less than half a year, certainly, because we actually have everybody there being paid as of January 1st. So I'm wondering about how that works. But the other thing I was thinking about is that maybe we could, I guess we could, being back to the capital budget moves, potential ones, we could get some of those cruisers, say two of those cruisers this year, and use some of that money for that. Is that true?
Yeah, that is true. Yep.
So that might solve the cruiser problem.
Counselor Goff? Kevin? Kevin, we're not hearing you. You're not on mute, but we're not hearing you. Did he go?
I see him, but I can't hear him.
His lips are moving.
Kevin, I'm not quite sure what's wrong with your connection.
Okay, hold on.
Okay, I can hear you now. We can hear you now. We can hear you now.
Okay. Oh, I know what's wrong with it. Hold on. Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I put the earphones plug in the microphone jack, so it's my fault. Technology's wonderful, right? So I just want to, I just want to say, I mean, I think this is the kind of thing we're going to get, become debating when we decide which of these scenarios to sort of focus on and how to move forward. But obviously, there are a few things in scenario two, or scenario six, that aren't scenario two. And we can mix and match these. I mean, your earlier question about, you know, if we want to put in a hiring freeze, do we want it to be a half-year or full year, at least in the budget, that's an easy shift in and out. So, you know, I really think that we should look at scenario two, we should look at scenario six. Then we should discuss them and, you know, we can mix and match one from this, one from that. But I think it would be good if we went ahead and looked at that and determined sort of how to focus on the bigger picture. Thank you.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you. Carrie, question here, for the reduction in travel, education, and meals to remain flat. I'm guessing, what would that look like if we eliminated that? And does, and I'm guessing that doesn't include all compliance, travel, and education? Because I know, I think we asked you, the staff, to take a deep dive into what is compliance-driven versus what is kind of non-essential travel and education?
So are you talking, like, going further than the $45,000, Danielle, or?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't go any further than the $45,000 reduction. If you did ask that, I'm sorry, I missed it. So I can go back and ask what's compliance versus what is, you know, educational?
Because I've seen some traveling freezes as well, if it's not non-essential in order to travel to meet some compliance standards with certification. So just curious to see if that, how much more we could save if we took a deeper dive into that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Merritt, please give me a minute, please. There is a hand up that hasn't spoken yet, so just give me two seconds, sir. Robert, you have to unmute yourself. Go ahead. You have to unmute yourself, Robert. Robert?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to offer two thoughts. I think that there are some things that we might do this year while we have funds available that would be beneficial to the Board of Education to reduce part of our requirement to them. And in doing so, that would reduce the amount that they would actually receive from us in the first half of the financial year, so that the new ceiling would be a little lower. I think Counselor Politis's perspective at the last meeting in terms of making sure we walk into the coming year without spending all of our money all at once in the coming year is a more conservative position. And I just, I wanted to try and provide some relief to council. I see council considering lots of scenarios and lots of line items. At the end of the day, a $40,000 adjustment to the scenario really isn't going to create much of an impact for the school district or the town. And if it's possible for council to take a look at the scenarios and give us final numbers, how much do you want the town to operate on? How much do you want the Board of Education to operate on while still holding the taxpayers' experience flat? We can figure out how to get to that number. And we can do that in an effective way that will do less collateral damage than selectively going into the line items right now and pulling them out. And my suggestion to council would be, the larger issue is, what do we want to give the school district, and what do we feel like we need to cut out of the town? And if you can help me with those two numbers, I can make those things happen for you within the administration, and we don't have to go through deciding who's going to get training and who's not.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you all to give me a two-minute recess.
So is that, you're streaming live, you did something, so you.
I did it, right? Okay. Okay, but now, so let me get back to you all. So, once again, if you just give me a minute, so India?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm still, so I'm still clocking? So is that okay?
You're recording? You're good.
Okay, am I back to you? Am I back to you? Okay, now I'm back. Okay, thank you all. Sorry. Okay. Carrie, you're not sharing your screen anymore, correct? Counselor Wong, is your hand still up? Go. Go ahead.
So, yeah, thank you, Robert, for those comments. You know, I think that the scenarios provide very high-level line items where I think it's okay to ask some deeper questions and get some further analysis on that. And when I refer to traveling freezes and hiring freezes, what that does is encourage a culture of responsibility throughout the entire town operations, not necessarily micromanaging line items, which I try to stay away from, but supporting responsible spending and conservative spending across the board. So again, I advocate for hiring freezes and travel freezes where feasible, without getting into being out of compliance with some of our certifications for some personnel. So that is why, when I refer to specific line items, at least the ones that we have, which are not a lot, so again, very high level, not really micromanaging them, but really just supporting a culture of responsible spending. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And I think I want to say that I do agree, especially in a time where we're all trying to make the best decisions possible, and we're all trying to use funds wisely and prudently. I think it's important that we do have that high level as to how it's going to affect each department, how it's going to affect the services that we provide. So I think it's important that we do get an understanding of this so that when we do come in with a number, we're all comfortable. Because at the end of the day, the council will have to respond to the residents, the voting public, as to why we made certain decisions. So I'm going to go ahead to Counselor Curtin, and then I'm going to go back to Counselor Merritt.
Yeah, I agree with those comments. The one thing that I would like to see, Carrie, is would you be able to factor in, in both scenarios, the $449,000 that we have there of possible capital projects that we're going to defer to possibly 2022? Would you be able to factor that in to see the change? In addition to that, I think we also need to realistically think about the MDC. I really do think that the MDC will also make some adjustments on their end. Obviously, it's a gamble on our end. We could, we could make some adjustments as far as what that total amount is. We could reduce it a little bit. And I believe MDC will, at the end of the year, make some adjustments on their end. Because I believe the towns in general, at least the eight member in town, I believe have made it known to the MDC that they also need to go back to the drawing table and make some adjustments, because everyone needs to spread the pain. And I know prior to the pandemic, you know, MDC had a lofty approach within their projects, but I think they also need to trim back too. We can make those projections as far as what we want to reduce that. I don't know if we want to go there, but that's also a possibility to reduce that number. Because my, perhaps make some adjustments on their end. So what I would like to see is just some adjustments here with the two scenarios. And I do agree, we need to at least move far from there. The one thing that I want to say, I don't believe that I can support any more reductions within the schools. I think the school initially came with 9.8, and we did reduce it to the 5-point, I think it's one or so, right now. And I think that's a happy medium where I think we could move forward, where the schools could also move ahead. I think initially, someone mentioned earlier that there will be some additional funding from the federal government through the state. And I think the article that I read is roughly around 11 million or so. When you look at how that's going to be allocated across the board, Bloomfield is going to end up with roughly around 400 and something thousand or less than that. That's just a, an estimate. That's going to help, but I don't think it's going to, it's going to deal with all the challenges that they are going to be facing in the fall and into the future. So I believe the one thing that we have to be cognizant about is that the schools do have to have ability with funding to go out and hire teachers in the summer to make sure that they staff correctly. So I believe that I could settle with scenario two. We could make some adjustment. But I think, I think that's a decent place to be with the schools. And I think the council do have to make a commitment moving forward that if we do see exactly if there's a need, I don't think anyone is going to stand by and watch the schools, you know, plummet. So I think they need to be an agreement from that standpoint with the Board of Ed. I would settle for scenario number, I think it was nine or whatever it is. I think I reviewed, six, sorry. I got the numbers all confused, but I think that's a good scenario that I think we all could be happy with. And I think there's adjustments. I do agree with Councilwoman Wong. You know, the one thing that I've been doing recently with others who are around in towns is reading up and see what they're doing, because that's part of the process. We don't sometimes need to reinvent the wheel, and they are having spending freeze across the board, across the board. And I have a saying, every penny counts. So we have to be good custodians of the taxpayer dollars. They're the ones that are affected, and we have to manage that correctly. So those are my comments. If we can get some of those scenarios adjusted a little bit, just to see what kind of impact it is, I believe we could, like Counselor Goff said, we could move beyond this. But I think scenario number six would be a feasible option for me to move forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Merritt?
I was going to suggest that maybe we ought to use scenario number two as a basis to add and subtract anything that we think ought to be. Just, I'm talking to people, I see a lot, I've heard people who think maybe we ought to give 2% to the board, and others are saying 4%. I think 3% is a good number, and we know that we can give them another 3% out of our reserves if they happen to need it. I just don't think it's too smart with all the uncertainty to give them all that money upfront and what scenario six would do. And they don't know what they need. We don't know what they need. It's so much uncertainty, and we don't know how much, really, that's going to come from the state or the federal, excuse me, the federal government. So I think it's just much smarter to give them at least 3% and expect they're going to need more, but maybe they won't. I mean, if they don't all go back to school in the fall, they, it's all distance learning, they may not need it. They don't need the buses. So it's, why not give, we know they can get more. They can get 3% without too much problem. And if we had to give them more than that, we could do that as well, because we have a healthy reserve. I just think that's a smart way to plan. And I think, I think there's a lot of agreement on that. So I would like to move that we.
Counselor Merritt, there's still hands up, so we can't move anything right now, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyway, I would suggest that. I'd also like to suggest that we buy those two cruisers out of this year's capital budget if we can't move that budget forward. So that would, that would eliminate that problem. From over the last 30 or 40 years, the one thing we've always, in a recession, held on to was it was really penny-wise and pound foolish not to get new cruisers because repair costs started exceeding the cost of a new cruiser. So I think it would be very smart to go ahead with at least two of those. Thank you.
Counselor DiLorenzo?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor DiLorenzo here. So I guess what I'm going to do is throw out the possibility of maybe a hybrid option that's between option two and option six. I understand what Counselor Merritt is saying about the board and trying to give them too much rather than give them a smaller amount and come back. But it seems like a long ways between 3% and 5.10%. I'm wondering if, and Carrie, I don't know if you could do this on the fly with this Excel. Maybe you could, because it, you know, I know you're a whiz at it. So I don't know if you can, you can do that while we speak. But if we were to put the hiring freeze that's in scenario six into scenario two, and then make some of the other adjustments we've been talking about, if we said we wanted to, you know, give the board a slightly higher, like a 3.5% increase, you know, what does that do to the numbers? And then does it, you know, keeps the tax rate with no increase, but doesn't take everything from the town? I mean, it doesn't seem fair if we, you know, take everything away from the town, but yet we give a portion to the board. So I want to make sure that we're being fair across, you know? So maybe it is adding in the two police cruisers. Maybe it is adding in a partial position that we would freeze. I don't know what's out of those positions, which is the most critical. You know, so I guess I'm throwing out the possible option. I know we don't want to look at many more options, but is there a hybrid between two and six?
Counselor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Counselor Goff. I think, yeah, we're getting down to the nitty-gritty. I want to, my concern is the same as Counselor DiLorenzo's just pointed out. Because if you go back to these two scenarios. I, I, my concern is the same as Counselor Di Lorenzo has just pointed out, because if you go back to these two scenarios. And I did, I did the calculations. I carried done the calculations, but I I sort of revamped them slightly to look at things. My issue with scenario six is that, well, let me stop for a second. Let me talk about scenario two. That's, that's. Okay. That's, that's the scenario that I'm I'm focused on. I think three for, so in that scenario, we have three percent for the Board of Education. Again, I want to point out. As Counselor Curtin said, one of the things we obviously need to do is go around and look at comparatively what other towns are doing with their budgets. And again, as with last year, three percent is actually a fairly high increase for Boards of Education from my, that what I've seen in the paper. But the issue with scenario two, as it's now allocated, is that if you give the three percent to the. Three percent to the Board of Ed and do the other changes that are currently in scenario two, so the partial year hiring increase, et cetera. What that comes down to is obviously a three percent increase in the Board of Education. And if you take all of those other. Expenses that you see on Carrie's screen, the town operations, the CIP, fixed cost debt, MDC, solid waste, health district. If you take all of the rest of those, that's about, it's just under a little, under point seven five percent. So that means that the Board of Ed gets three percent, the town, the town in total, including those MDC charges and so forth. End up at point seven five percent. And if you break those out further so that you just look at those, those MDC. Mira, the solid waste and the health district charges, those actually amount to one point one three percent increase. And the town actually has a decrease of point three nine percent. So. My issue right now, and it goes to what Counselor Di Lorenzo just made comment of, is that. I, I like scenario two, the basic idea of it. I think it. You know, I think it gives the schools. Very high funding level relative to other towns. But I'm concerned about that we're not funding the town well enough. And we all have, we can all, this council go through and say, well, police cruisers are important, or the splash pad is important, or this kind of capital improvement is important. And I think the, the thing is, we need to agree on that, but we need to have some of those to go to the town. So what I had suggested, or what I, what I was going to suggest is a modification. That we reduce the Board of Education increase to two percent. That gave the Board of Ed two percent. And if you do that math, again, with just what's in scenario two. You know, you're, you're going to be left over with about four hundred thousand dollars. And if you allocate that back to the town. Then the town's spending, including MDC, goes up to a little over one and a half percent. So it's still a half percentage point less than the schools. Now granted, the MDC still takes one point whatever, but the town actually gets an increase of half a percent. I don't know how we. I, I, I think this is the basic question we have come to grips with. I think, I believe that scenario six, it just takes too much away from the town. And we will have a hard time recovering in town services. And I think just the level of uncertainty of anything with respect to. You know. The Board of Education, what school is going to look like next summer, what, you know, what even our services. I mean, we've already, we're already talking about canceling the pool two weeks ago when we weren't doing that. So. I think the, the comments that Counselor Di Lorenzo made about. How this all ties together with the school, you know, what, what, what funding we have available that's going to the schools, what funding that is going to the town. I think that's the fundamental question to answer. And I think that's, you know, I, I, you know, I can support scenario two as stands. I would have a hard time, I think, supporting much of an increase in the Board of Ed there. I could support a decrease with more going to the town. But I think this is the direction we need to. We need to decide how how to move ahead. Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Counselor Politis and then I'll go to the Deputy Mayor and then. I'll go to Counselor Curtin.
Hi.
Counselor Politis?
Counselor Politis speaking. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of. Tie back with what Joe was saying too. I do like, I do like scenario two. I think it's a much more conservative approach. Kind of across the board. When Board of Education presented last week, they did not, they made mention that approximately three percent of their budget was for the new teachers that they needed. And the rest of the costs were going to be, were, were quote unquote fixed, fixed costs. I think that this might be the first time in history that fixed costs have become variable. Where we don't really know what. We're going to be spending in specific areas on fixed costs because we don't know. Are the schools going to be open September? Are they going to be open in November? Are they going to be open in September, closed in November? And all this kind of stuff. So I think that, I think that if we can. Keep as much money as we can in the fund balance. Fund them for the teachers that they actually do need and then work with the variable costs on a. Needed basis further down the road. I think it allows us to be. More flexible. Also, getting back to like police cruisers, et cetera, and stuff like that, I think we should take as much of the. Money that we can that's sitting in CIP that's not going to get used. Move it back into some of the stuff that, like. If we don't do two cruisers now, when the ask was four cruisers, just, just as an example. We're going to have to do four cruisers next year. Because there's going to be cruisers that have two hundred thousand miles on them that are falling apart next year. So if we don't do something with that kind of stuff now, it's only going to put us in a worse position further down the road. So if we can take as much money as we can from stuff that's not going to get done. Bring it back into this, bringing it back into this year's budget and do whatever we can with it. To prevent us from having to go from a zero tax percentage this year to a ten percent or something ridiculous next year. I, I think we just need to, we need to be looking at, we need to be looking a little bit at next year and further down the road. I know we want to go zero this year, but we have to kind of be fiscally responsible as to what we're doing this year as it compares to next year because. If we do zero this year and we got everything, next year is going to be. Even more difficult to comprehend, you know, comprehend. That's, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on, someone asked if we could make the scenarios public. So. I'll ask Carrie that once we. Revised the scenarios, if we can go ahead and make them public. Another question is, how can we go from a ten percent ask from the BOE and say that three percent is half? That is shortchanging kids' access to the supports they need. Case loads for educators needs to be reduced. Also, the councilman, to Councilman Goff's point. What's fair is not equal. We need to prepare kids for an unknown future, not pinch pennies when it comes to educating our children. We need to be fair for our kids. I'm going to go ahead and. Soon as I find him. Deputy Mayor, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think that's a. Powerful comment just you just read. I, I, I think citizens and we all have to acknowledge that we are trying to do what's best for our students. We're trying to do what's best for our town. There's a limited amount of money available without raising taxes. There's extreme unknowns. That we're operating within. And it's unfair to say that we don't want to provide for our students. It, it, it might, if we provide our students and we can't provide for your street front in front of your house, then you have a problem. There are other issues involved here, and I think Councilman Politis said it best. We're working against these unknowns and next year could be a lot worse. And there could be a significant increase required when we, for, for, for budget and for taxes. When we started this process, we acknowledged this. We said we wanted to be fair and equitable in the distribution of the pain. And try and do the best we can with the money we can raise without increasing the amount of taxes. And to think that we're going to increase to meet the, the Board of Education's full need is, is. In my, my thinking, somewhat irresponsible. We don't know what their year, their school year is going to be like. We have no ability to, to, to work within their budget to see if they're actually spending the money and getting the results that they expect. So we, we, we have to be a lot more. Careful in how we allocate this. And I think going with a, a reduced budget this time. And sharing the pain and having some alternatives or flexibility going forward. Is a better approach for our, for our citizens and for our students as well, because I think the Board of Education has flexibility within their budget. To reallocate some of those funds that may be going to other functions to the classrooms and and meet the needs of those kids. So there's, there's a lot of different ways to look at this and I. I, I think the council has to resolve first, what is it? In terms of a tax increase on, on our citizens, because that's what we started out with. So let's, let's get back to that and then we'll see where, where the scenario hits. I, 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 at this point, I tend to believe somewhere between. Three, two and three, there's a beginning point is a good place to start. We can build it up from there if, if there's reason, if there's something to get into. I really, I really don't like the idea of going line by line and 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 micromanaging this at this point. I think we give both the manager and the Board of Education a number and let them micromanage it from there and see what they want to do with the money.
So Carrie, I know that because you're sharing your screen. Others that are, the participants cannot see who is speaking. There was a request. That they would like to see who's speaking, so I'm going to ask you to stop sharing your screen. We have not yet gone through scenario number six and I believe that we should. Once again, I believe it's important that we understand the ramifications of the decisions that we make. I'm going to allow Board Chair, Mr. Harris. He is on the line and he has been listening. So, Mr. Harris, please go on ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am really disturbed, to say the least, from what I'm hearing from the council. To equate. Street fronts. To our children's education is, is the height of. Of. Gosh. Okay, I gotta behave myself. I can't believe.
It's live. Let's, let's be careful.
Can't believe that came out of your mouth, Mr. Deputy Mayor. To equate the street fronts to our children's education. I'm, I'm hearing from most of the folks that are speaking with the two to three percent. Scenario. Are people that either don't have any kids in the system. Or kids have already gone through the system years ago. I, I, I'm just, I'm just appalled. Yes, we don't know what's going to be happening in, in September. But we are planning right now to, to start the school year and, but we need funds to do that. I think one of the biggest problems we had. Was in the first four years of Dr. Thompson's tenure, he put through a zero percent budget. He should have put some money in there and then we probably wouldn't be having this issue now. You know. To put a three percent, two percent or. Whatever on us. Would mean that original five hundred and thirteen thousand we proposed last week. Then we have to go after the OPEC money, some money. Then we have to go after insurance money. Then we have to go after a pension reduction. And then we have to still come back to you. For fund balance. So you, you asked, you don't want to micromanage us, but yet you want us to. Pretend that you're a big brother and we're going to have to come back and say, you know, would you please give us some money so we can finish out the school year? We would like to do this on our own. And, and there's money left at the end, we'll give it back, but. But we don't make this budget in a vacuum. It's a very hard work that's come, come about. Now, the feds are giving out a hundred and eleven million dollars. Every school system to. Assist in the reopening in September. Okay, but very clearly, this is meant to supplement. Your budget, not to supplant it. And I, I'm, I'm taking that everybody understands what those two words mean. So supplement, not to supplant. And, and. You know, we like, like Hartford getting ten million or Waterbury getting nine million. New Haven getting twelve million. You know, we're getting three hundred and ninety three thousand. I told you last week that we, our expenses are going to increase. Because we have to. We gotta hire more custodians. If you heard, you know, bus is another situation. How many kids can we put into, into a classroom? If you heard the news last night, the Executive Director of the Superintendent's Association talked about. Perhaps two bus runs. For, for, for school. Talked about. Increased classes or alternate day classes, which is going to call for more teachers. Talk about maybe six days a week as opposed to five, so we can spread things out. Those are the unknowns. But please, don't ever equate our children, which is your future. With. The rest of the community. The community, the town and the board do not have to be in sync with each other. And Mr. Goff often likes to suggest, you know, when he's checking with board budgets around the state. He has, he's not checking with board budgets because most, a lot of the budgets aren't finished yet. But in most cases, the board budget in the, in most, most towns are higher than the council budget. Always. And. They don't have to be, they don't have to be alike, but we have got to be concerned about our children. If that means anything to you. You won't make that drastic cut. Because it's, it's only going to hurt the kids. It's not hurting Don Harris. I'm getting a pension check regardless. It's not hurting James Thompson. So if you're coming after us, it's not working. You're hurting the kids. Thank you.
Counselor Curtin?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. I guess I, I was also disappointed, listening and hearing folks equate, talking about. You know, we could invest in the cruisers and we need that. And I, I do get it. I, I really do understand that we're here trying to make sure we do what's right. But here is what I'm not willing to compromise, the future of our children. Okay, that's one of the most valuable assets that we have in this town. Okay, and as a parent of two young kids within the school system that I choose, that I chose to send here. And I believe that our school system have made progress. We, in the last two to three years, we've came in to this council, made stipulations with the, the school board. They have made commitment and I think we have to follow through on our part. Let's just dissect this for a second. Going into this process, I know for a fact, based on my own knowledge and experience. With talking with educators, being in the school, being present, okay? I think too many times we sit in the council chambers and we make decisions across the board. And some of us are not making effort to actually go on the front line to figure out exactly what some of those challenges are. So coming into this process, I knew. After the pandemic hit, that the schools are going to be in dire need. I, I don't know how, how many, how many more times can I express to members of this council who don't have kids within the school system? Who don't know the day to day challenges, who don't really foresee. It's, it's okay to not be in the midst of it, but guess what? I am dealing with my children on a daily basis. They have. I am dealing with my children on a daily basis, they have what their need. Even for them, it will still be a challenge going back into the fall. And they have two parents that are actively involved in the day-to-day educational needs. This is gonna be a disaster for our students going back in. They have been away from our schools for a while. They're gonna go back in. They're even talking about even the universities, a higher level education, they're gonna be challenged. And we're here sitting and talking about, we can shift things around. I mean, the issue is real, guys. We're, we're, we're not making this up. There is challenges. Go out, talk to the teachers. Please do that. They do have challenges. Listen, we've had, and I think Mr. Mr. Harris said it, we've had our differences about different things within the schools. I mean, we came into this process thinking that we know everything, but we don't. We're not educators. We have to be sensitive of what's going on here. We can't say we can make the decision, oh, let's, let's just do this, let's give them two percent and then they can come back to us and we can figure it out. It doesn't work that way. And most of you know that when it comes to budgeting and when it comes to projecting and planning for the future, it doesn't work that way. I'm not saying that we all have the funds here to do whatever we want. Well, all I'm asking is, think about what we're talking about here. I haven't heard anyone else, except for a couple, really talk about the future of our kids and how that's important. I've heard about, oh, we need to, we need equity. There, there's, there's no such thing, I think Mr. Harris said, when you look at different budgets around our surrounding neighbors, it's usually half, sixty percent or fifty percent of their budget is education. You look at West Hartford, West Hartford was coming with a three percent increase. That was equivalent to five point something million, where more than we, we were requested initially when, when the board were coming in for nine point seven, seven, eight percent increase. I, I am disappointed with the conversation. I do respect my colleagues and their opinion, but I think you have to look at this from a different angle. These are, these are babies, man. These, these kids are, are behind in the first place. They are behind in the first place and you gotta believe the gap is gonna increase tremendously. And we're here simply just trying to negotiate their future. I am not willing to do that. I'm definitely not willing to do that and this may be the first time in history that I will definitely vote for this budget. If we're saying, if we're sitting here and I'm hearing people talking about, oh, let's just cavalierly give them two percent and there is no rationale behind that. The fact of the matter is, if my colleagues went through the Board of Ed budget in detail and look at what they're requesting, a lot of these comments wouldn't be made tonight. Once again, I understand it's a tough decision. The one thing I would like to, to, to get from Carrie, our finance chair, with the two scenarios right now, what kind of, because I don't have it in front of me, what kind of a tax effect would have had? Would, would both scenarios give a zero percent or whatever increase for the town? Wouldn't that happen? Carrie?
Yeah, yes. Yes.
Correct. So both scenarios right now is getting to, getting us to where we need to be. We were very conservative with the fund balance. I was willing to meet in the middle. I think this five point one something percent, I believe is reasonable. Now we're talking two percent and, I mean, I, I listened to my colleague, Mr. Merritt, who has, since I've been on the council for the last two years, have been very supportive of the schools. I'm disappointed tonight. He's been advocating for the schools since I've been on the council and he's always been advocating to give them, give them more when everything is fine. Now we're in a disaster. I'm surprised to hear he wants to go backwards. So there needs to be some consistency with decisions that we make. And I'm, I'm, I'm just disappointed, I'll be very straightforward with my colleagues, disappointed in what I'm hearing tonight. Our future and the reality is, we're talking about one town here. This is, I don't see the town as the town in the school board. We're a united front and that's exactly how every other town will look at it when, when they have discussion. That's the type of approach that we have to take. We need to invest in our future. Both scenarios get us to exactly where we need to be. We have a healthy fund balance. We'll be able to help us going forward. And I think everyone have said it, we, we all don't know exactly what's gonna happen in the next six or seven months, but believe me, we're gonna have to adjust. So, but thank you for indulging me in that, but I'm just a little disappointed in what I'm hearing. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did we lose the mayor?
Don't see her.
We did.
Are you saying I have the controls now?
No one has the controls.
Yeah, I am. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get to, I had seen that Fran's hand was up, but I can't, I can't unmute him for some reason. Can you hear me? I can't unmute Fran for some reason. I think I lost the ability to be the host.
Oh, I got it.
Fran?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think it's the last time you didn't, you didn't re-mute me, so I muted myself.
Okay.
Sorry, Council Plitus speaking, I just wanted to kind of address just a few comments. One by Mr. Harris regarding the zero percent increase over several years. And I, I think that, I do think that, that that has brought it, and, and same thing on the town side. You know, I think that's brought us to a perfect storm here this year, unfortunately. We, the, the, the previous councils, to me getting here, have, have done a done a really good job of trying to flatten taxes. However, I think what's brought us to a year now where we were entering into the word, I think the, the board of education used was a corrected budget. And I think that was true on the town side as well. And now that we have this current situation going on, it's put us into a, an almost impossible situation. So I, I think that, and I just want, just wanna go on the record, I, I don't have any children in the school system. I understand that, but you know, I also understand that having a good, good school system is important for everybody in town. And I believe in funding, I believe in funding the school. I, I believe in, and I believe in the children are the future of, of what's going on. And I think it's very important that we try to do a good education. I may not have children in the school, but I know from a property owner that a property in a school system that's achieving is worth more than, and, and worth more than a property in a school system that's not achieving. So, so I may not really have any skin in the game as opposed to people in the, in, in the schools itself, but I understand that I still have skin in the game because my property value is based on what the schools are gonna be, what the schools are gonna be doing. And I guess, but I'm hearing, I, I've heard from several people in town and I'm hoping there's more than just the attendees in here and I hope there's a lot of people on YouTube. I guess I would pose the question to everybody that's in attendance and watching on YouTube, you know, that they don't want us, they don't want us to slash the school buzzet, budget. And we've been running under the assumption that nobody wants, nobody can tolerate a tax increase. So are we possibly wrong that maybe people can tolerate a small tax increase to help fund the school budget? And I would put that out there. I mean, you can, you can reply to the, the town website. I apologize, Carrie, because maybe I just gave you a lot more work to do answering questions. But I, I, I think that maybe we need to know that over the next, hopefully over the next two days when we meet again on Thursday, that maybe there is a consensus out there that we can, we can do a one percent increase or a two percent increase and, and, and spend more money on the school system. I'm just, the reason I'm in favor of the three percent is that I just don't want to gut the town, the town's rainy day fund and then, and then not have anything to fall back on next year or whatever because there's just so much uncertainty with this. Thank you.
I'm going to go with Counselor Calhoun. She hasn't said anything throughout the meeting. Counselor Calhoun?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and my fellow colleagues and those that are listening in as attendees. I do not have children in the school system at the moment, but I had had school, children in the school system as I've graduated. I would hate to see, and I'm gonna go to an extreme. We're in, as we have all said, recognize and we fully know because we're operating in uncertain times. We cannot afford to have an entire school year lost due to COVID. We need to fund the school system in a proper fashion. Actually, they need more, but it's gonna be a fine, a fine balance. And, and I'm going to put it as, as it has been on Chairman Harris and the school board. And they've been doing what they have to do. And I continue to challenge them to do what they have to do in balancing monies in the classroom versus possibly more administration. We know there is going to be a challenge with buses. We know there's going to be additional challenges with additional teachers. We don't know how this has affected some of our special ed classrooms. We don't know if all of our children are, how they're doing virtually. This has been a challenge for myself and I do this regularly because you have to be a lot more attentive when you're dealing virtually. Our children may not all, especially the lower grades, they don't have the attention span to spend any more than, say fifteen or twenty minutes possibly on a computer. So I challenge us to at least go with our three percent budget scenario. And I'm hoping that within, we don't need to do a, a great, great deal more. This is a fine balancing act. And I do understand that the town has to run as well as the Board of Education with our children. Yes, our children, because that's what affects our town. Again, I will agree with all is, most of what has been said, but especially with Councilman Plitus. Just because I do not have children in the, in the school system at the moment. But yes, our, all of our property values will be affected if our school system does not produce coming out of this. We know they're going to more than likely need more money. We don't know where that has to be applied yet, but I'm in support of at least standing on the three percent to start at the moment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I don't have biological children in the school system either, but I have nieces and nephews and godchildren and other children that calls me auntie and mom. So I'm very concerned about our school system. I know that there are challenges right now. I've heard, I have friends that are educators. I have a daughter that's an educator and I know the difficulty that they're facing now under these conditions. We do not know what the school is going to be facing come September or come July when summer school starts. I am of the opinion, last year we started them at three percent, right? And there was a deficit, there was some issues there. So I would like to see us go a little bit above the three percent. I do like scenario six. I think it was Counselor DiLorenzo that said if we can make a hybrid between two and six, I think we should think about that. But I also believe that we need to be mindful that these are challenging times. And the school is only, it's, it's only gonna get more difficult, right? If we're talking about socially distancing our students, that equals more classes, more classes equals more teachers, more teachers and more support staff. So we just need to be mindful of that and it's all good and well to say, oh, they can come back to us when they need money. And I honestly believe whatever we give them, they're gonna have to come back to us. So let's try to keep that in mind. I'm going to let Counselor DiLorenzo go, then I'm gonna let Counselor Curtin go, I'm gonna let Counselor Merritt, Counselor Goff go, then I'm gonna let Counselor Merritt go, then I'm gonna let Deputy Mayor go. Counselor DiLorenzo. And then, I'm sorry, yes, the town manager after Counselor Merritt, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I can't believe I'm saying it, but I was sort of heading down the same path as Counselor Plitus. I mean, after hearing everyone's comments and, you know, reflecting on this, I mean, maybe we can't, maybe we do need to take a step back. We're coming at this the wrong way. Maybe we need to look at a very small, maybe a one percent increase in the mill rate in order to accommodate a larger increase to the, to the Board of Ed. I don't see how else it's possible to do this because we are cut to the bone at this point everywhere. And then to further cut the board would, would be wrong. I, I don't believe that we can do that. And so I do agree with Counselor Plitus. I think we at least need, again, I hate to say it, another, yet another scenario, but I think we have to take a step back. And what would it do to put in a small increase in the mill rate, no more than one percent? Just to see what that looks like. I, I, I don't know what else we could do at this point, other than to potentially increase the tax rate by some small amount. We just don't have enough money to go around and everyone is already to the point where there is nothing left to give. You know, but I definitely feel that we need to take care of the school kids and our districts. If we have to raise the taxes in, to a percentage to go to the board, I would at least like to entertain that option. Otherwise, we're gonna continue to struggle between two and six, potentially a hybrid. If there's something between two and six that we can look at, that, you know, we could, you know, just give those numbers and leave the rest to the manager so they could figure out as he's later on, we give the percent and then determine where the cuts come from. Those are my, I mean, it's a tire all the way and we have to look at a small increase. I, I don't know what else we could really do. We can't just-
Correct. I have a couple of, I have a couple of text messages. Thank you, Counselor Plitus. And a, a couple of question and answers, no, people can't afford taxes. There are a lot of people in town who've lost their jobs, been put on furlough. An increase in taxes at this time will cause financial catastrophe for families. And there, I have not seen, yes, yet, that anyone says, okay, go ahead and raise my taxes. So I said Counselor DiLorenzo, then I think I said Counselor Curtin, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about scenario number six. What is, what is the, what is the problem with scenario number six? Because it does get us to a zero tax increase. So I'm trying to get a sense from my colleagues on what is wrong with scenario number six. I think if we can get some sort of communication there, we could move beyond where we are right now. But what is the problem with scenario number six? What is challenging about scenario number six is still gets to zero percent. So if we could have that discussion, I think it will be helpful for me at least.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead and let everybody else go around and then I'm gonna have Carrie talk about scenario number six. Counselor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I, I have a number of things to say, but I'll, I'll, I'll just take a minute and talk about scenario number six.
Can we have, can we have Carrie present that first? But if you're gonna talk about it, can she present it and then you go ahead and talk up, speak about it?
Okay, okay, we, we can come back. That, that, that's fine.
Okay, excellent.
No, I, I wanna, I wanna make mostly comments about some of the comments made by everyone about the school system before that, before I do that though. I do wanna make one comment that I think we like it away and I don't think anybody is really contemplating it very seriously. You know, I'm all in favor of our ultimately talking to the MDC, ultimately trying to figure out what we can do to get the MDC under control. I, I do not think it would be a wise thing in this time of uncertainty to make any kind of assumptions that we can expect any kind of reduction in the MDC's this year's budget. So while I'm, you know, while I, as, by as much as anybody on this council, I'm not very happy with the MDC and how they operate on almost all levels. uh, am not very happy with the MDC and how they operate, um, on almost all levels. Um, I also don't think that's a physically prudent or, um, even a, you know, good idea at this point. We need, we need to deal with the hand we're dealt now and do, and move on. So I, I really wanna say a few things about, um, the Board of Ed budget or the schools budget or, or whatever we wanna call it. First of all, uh, I don't think that anybody on this council, or I hope anyone in town is, does not think that educating our children is unimportant. It certainly is one of the most important things we do as a collective group, as a species. However, I also hope, I, I would like to believe that no one thinks that educating our children has only to do with how much money you put into a school system. It has a lot, a lot, a lot of factors other than that. And part of the whole thing with, with this whole question is we are the town council, and we have to be responsible for how we spend the entire portion of the taxpayers' money. And we have to make this a good place to live. And a large part of that is in fact, uh, making, you know, trying to have an excellent school system, trying to have an excellent community that people can congregate in, trying to have up-to-date and not crumbling infrastructure. And I think, you know, I think all of those things are important, and it is, I think everyone on the council will agree. We get comments on all of them. So I get a lot of comments that are, are related to all of those things. But we have to find a balance, and I think that's what we are trying to do here. But I wanna say a few factual things that I think are important about the, the budget. I have looked at what other towns are doing. And yes, uh, some of them give more money to the schools, but they also have different school populations in terms of sizes. West Hartford has been mentioned. The population of West Hartford is three times the population of Bloomfield. I don't know what their school population is. The population of Simsbury, for example, is, I think, about thirty percent higher than Bloomfield, but their school population is almost twice as much. So anytime you look at those things, you have to have some kind of normalizing factor. And the normalizing factor, quite honestly, is the fact that you need to look at the spending per student. And we all know that that is something that is extremely high in Bloomfield. And, you know, it's causing us to lose, it's causing us to lose, uh, special education funding because we do not get funded by the state's special ed, we do not get funded as heavily by the state's Special Education Fund because of our, our, our spending per pupil. So, you know, in looking, I, I have been looking generally at what towns have been doing for budgets in terms of zero percent increase, one percent increase, two percent increase. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. Really has not, you know, it's really looking at what, you know, what they're increasing. Again, last year we gave the schools a three percent budget increase. That was a larger increase than most of the surrounding towns. And I, I only don't say all because I've never gone back and done a comprehensive, tried to get all those numbers, because as Chairman Harris points out, there doesn't seem to be a good point for all those numbers are put together. I don't think, um, uh, I don't think that anyone on this council thinks they know, that thinks they know specific, what? Have specific expertise in terms of running the school system or the town for that matter. All we need, what we need to do is make, is, is make assumption, or not make assumptions. We, we need to make judgments about having the best administration of those things in, in place. We've heard about teachers in the classroom. I, I don't think anyone disagrees with that, but that is a decision that the people running the school system need to make. And just like any, you know, any, um, household or business or municipality that functions under a budget, that's, that's what has to be looked at, and we need to look at all facets. This council, through the manager and through, uh, Finance Director, have been cutting, cutting to the bone. And as I pointed out, I think in the last meeting, there are things we have asked about, we have asked about, or potentially putting in our budget for the town that I do not believe have been put into any kind of, put into the Board of Education's budget or thinking about it or whatever. That's not, as pointed out, that's not my place. All we can do is try to look at a equitable distribution of funds. We are in a very, very bad spot. I do wanna echo what the mayor said because I, I, I'm glad Counselor Politis brought it up and, and Counselor DiLorenzo. But I have talked to numerous people over the last month and a half, and they know we're in budget. And the first thing I generally get is, well, you know, you can't raise taxes because of the situation we're in. And that includes some people who are employed, some people who are unemployed. You know, it's unfortunate, um, but I think that is the situation we're in. I think that's, um, that's what I was, uh, most of, the notes I had, uh, I think it's a difficult thing. I, uh, I, I do wanna make some comments about scenario six, but I hope we can, uh, I, I, I hope we as a council can come to some conclusions of how to proceed. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to take a chance to perhaps respond, uh, to some of the comments earlier. Perhaps I used the wrong reference to Chairman Harris when I said street services, cuz I wasn't, it didn't come to me quickly, but, you know, there are also other services that the town provides. Social services, recreational services, development services, which combined really do provide the kind of, of an impetus for growth in our community. And if we're saying that our schools have been deficient over the years, we can make that, we, our goal is, would, would be to make that better, but not at the expense of everything else. I don't think that would be appropriate. That's why I hear people all saying equity. Uh, the fact that, uh, people still move to our town, still invest in our town, still see property values improving is, is, is a sign that it all, something is all working together. It's not just our educational system. Yes, we wanna do for our kids what's right, no question about it. How can we afford it? Okay, so now, now people are backing off a little bit on the initial concern of a no tax increase, they're thinking about the tax increase. And I think that's dangerous, cuz I don't think that's where the people are. I don't think that's where we are. We're just getting confused and not willing to make a decision here. And I guess we, I think we were right in the beginning to think about an equitable decision that gives something to each. I don't think we can afford to lose momentum in our school services. I absolutely agree. I also don't think we can afford to lose momentum in our social and recreational services to people. But all that money comes out of the same pot. And if it's not there, then somebody else is gonna get, get, get dinged. So that's where we came up with the idea of equity, fair sharing of the pain. For now. Next year could be something else, could be better, could be a lot worse. So I, I don't see us fully, fully all our money in one, one basket in the hopes that that, our kids getting better grades is gonna solve the problems that we're pre, facing. So I, 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 I understand Chairman Harris's, uh, uh, desire because he's, he's obviously head of the school board. He wants to see, uh, his, his, his businesses, school board business, take precedent. I understand that. And I understand certain councilmen talking about they have kids in the school. Well, I, like some other accounts, so I've had kids in the school too. And every year it was an issue of more money, more money, more money. If that were the case, and that was the way it was going, we'd have the best school system ever in this town. But we know things don't always happen that way. We do the best we can, we're humans. Sometimes things screw up. If we could at least ask for, uh, uh, support, communication, and ongoing, uh, interactions with the school board over time to see how we can do these things better, how we can better serve you, how you can better, uh, serve the town, whatever we can do to make the process of a better education and affordable level better for the, possible in the town would be an approach. I don't think it helps to say one person is right, one person is wrong. And I don't think there is a right or wrong here that anybody can quite quantify. The only thing we can quantify is, how many dollars are we expecting to bring in? And who's gonna pay for it? Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Merritt, I'm gonna let you go, and then Chairman Harris has, uh, something to say. Counselor Merritt, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, I was accused of flipping on the Board of Ed back several times ago by, anyway, I, I'd like to respond to that, that I have been a supporter of education. And, um, going back a lot of years, and especially in the last two years ago, especially in three years ago. Um, in fact, the last two or three terms, I have been thinking they were under budgeted. And that always is in the context of what the town can afford, as it is right now. And we are doing a good job, we're giving them three percent. I think that's a million and a half practically, and it's, uh, better than we did in past years. And I think, um, I think we ended up giving them three percent last year too. But, um, but I'm saying that in the context that we know they may need more money, and that we have the reserves, thank goodness. And we need to keep those reserves so that we can come up with that more money. We're not going to underfund them. It's, we're going to give them what they have to have. And, but to throw a lot of money at them right now, not, they really don't know what they're going to need. They don't. And they're saying, okay, you'll give it back at the end of the year, but it doesn't make sense for us to raise taxes on our people now who can't afford it. They did last year, they could afford it, but not this year. And I, I think it's, uh, it would be a big mistake to just throw that money out thinking they may need it. And, and when we could give them the money later on, anyway. So I like the idea of, of coming up with three percent now and give them three percent later. That's over the five percent, it's six percent. And if they need more than that, we have it in our reserves. But just to tax the people to come up with that money in case they need it, doesn't make any sense. And this whole idea of equity is ridiculous. It doesn't, I agree with that completely. And I also agree that our, our schools, uh, the last five years or so have been underfunded. And I, I think we, we need to long-term do something about that, and that, what we're doing this year is partially catching up. Cuz we are basically cutting everything else in order to give the schools that three percent, which is, you know, not really fair. But that's, it's not a matter of being fair, it's a matter of what they really need. So I think, I think we really should stick to our guns on that. We always, they always want more money. Every year they come in for more money. Uh, this, this board, Superintendent back three or four years ago, when he came in with zero increase, that was an anomaly. That has never happened in the history of the town before. And, and it was to his credit, he knew we were in the Great Recession then. Well, hey, we're in the, we're in even greater problem right now. So we can't, we can't give them everything they want, uh, upfront. And, and I think we should be very glad, and they should be very glad we have the reserves we have. So if they really do need it, we'll come up with it. But there's no point in, in taxing the people for maybe that money they might need. And I, I really feel strongly about that. But, so, thank you. That was, that was my point. I, I have consistently been a supporter of the schools, so I didn't feel that was fair. Thank you.
Counsel, uh, Chairman Harris? And then we'll go to the Town Manager and then to Counselor Wong. Counsel, uh, Chairman Harris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, that was an interesting point, Counselor Merritt. Yeah, we have been underfunded for the years. When Dr. Thompson did that four years in a row of, uh, zero percent, it wasn't because he was doing a favor to the town. He took an honest look at the budget and said, we can function with this amount of money. We don't need to request anything. This is why I know the budget that you is accurate and the amount of money that we need to run the school system. Now, uh, here you go again. And I, I do appreciate you, uh, Counselor Merritt. You know, we, you and I go back thirty, forty years, probably more. I don't want you to give me three percent now and then play big brother six months down the road for me to come back and ask you for some more money. We're asking you for this budget amount, uh, be it, be it eight percent, six, seven percent, six percent. When you start going below that, then we're gonna have problems. Because we wanna take this and we want to run the school system. We don't plan to come back and ask you for, uh, for some money. Only if there becomes a bad scenario of, uh, you know, special ed, uh, special needs children coming into the system. We are, and I, I, I chuckle at, uh, the comparison the Counselor, uh, Goff always makes. He compares us to West Hartford and to Simsbury. Well, both of those districts are larger than us. West Hartford is probably two and a half times our size. Their budget, their school budget, it's three times our size. Simsbury is, he's probably correct, they're about thirty percent higher. Their budget is twice our size. We have the highest number of DCF referred cases here in Bloomfield than any other district, higher than, uh, West Hartford. And I'm not talking percentage, I'm talking about actual children in the, in the system. Then, then the West Hartford, Simsbury, Granby, Avon, I don't, I don't care where you go, just stay out of Hartford. But to get them out of Hartford, they're coming to Bloomfield, not to Windsor, to Bloomfield. You know, i- it's, I'm sorry if you, uh, you got upset with me, Counselor Man, but you know, it, those words came out of your mouth. So I just, I wrote them down and I repeated them. Yes, you had, I've had both of your children in my gym classes, but that was forty years ago. All right, so it's been a long time, uh, since you've been involved in the system. But, and yes, I have, I am a lover of education, that's my profession. I started that in nineteen sixty-seven. But when I retired, I did four years as Deputy Mayor on the council, which you're well aware of. My thought was still on the Board of Education and what I could do for them, along with trying to be fair for the, for the town. But I wasn't concerned about the inequitable. I wanted to do what's best for our children. Regardless of who they are, the best for our children. So, um, and I will be doing that right up until my time expires in office and beyond. As long as I am here, I will be fighting for, uh, getting whatever I can get for the kids. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm gonna go to our, uh, Town Manager.
Madam Mayor, I was unmuted the, thank you, thank you so much. Um, I have some thoughts that are compiled from the conversations that I've heard playing across the discussion here, and I just wanted to offer them, uh, as some food for thought, uh, from an administrative perspective. We, we need a conservative solution right now because the future is very unclear. And we're almost certain that we are facing an incredibly difficult financial year, and that the demands for operations from the BOE are very high right now. It's unknown what we're going to lose in economic employment and income damages from the pandemic. And those losses won't be recovered quickly. It's going to take a year or two for us to get those losses back. Committing an extremely large amount right now doesn't leave the town with degrees of freedom later. So if we encounter significant recession and we set the bar really high on July one, we may have issues. However, if we anticipate that an additional appropriation is going to be needed anyway, then why not plan this out conservatively? Saving something back to provide an appropriation for the school district mid-year keeps more degrees of freedom in councils' hands, and it's an alternative that costs the town nothing. Those funds can be there, and they can be there for the school district if they need them. If everyone isn't participating in the cuts and we forego any impact to the taxpayer, we most certainly we most certainly guarantee some sort of a significant tax increase in the following year. And the majority of the revenue is gonna go to the Board of Education, and that's not gonna reduce next year. We will be in a more difficult situation next year, and we won't have a choice but to pass a tax increase on to our taxpayer. If we cut the town's operating budget below our current year levels, and we do that at a line item level right now, we're going to remove flexibility from the town's administration, and we will reduce our ability to adjust across the coming year to reduce our expenses. It will become more difficult for us to manage our budget and try and reduce our expenditures below whatever it is that council approves now. We're already planning to make changes to the administration that will reduce some of our operating costs in this coming year. But if there are line level cuts across departments from council that happen as a result of this budget, we will have more difficulty deploying that. We are a united front, we are one whole town, and all of the functions need to move forward. The minority of the taxpayers' funds within the town administration are being cut to the bone to enable the council to pass additional money to the Board of Education and flat taxes to the taxpayer. The town administration is asking only for flexibility in deploying cuts to our budget so that we can achieve those cuts with the least amount of collateral damage. While we are the lesser of the total funds that are at play, we are the only ones being cut below current budget levels. And we do offer transparency, we offer performance information, we offer financial details, and a willingness to accept further cuts for consideration. This situation that's presented to council is untenable, and we want to support council in getting there. All we ask for is the ability to meet those cuts in a creative way using our professional acumen so that we can preserve our public services. We can meet council's number, but we need the ability to craft those cuts across our departments so they present the least damage to our operation. We are all in this together. And if additional funds are needed for the Board of Education and the town administration is willing to cut everything we can below current funding levels to give millions to the BOE. And it's absolutely imperative that even more funds go to the Board of Education. Why aren't the additional needs for additional funds that the BOE has passed on to the taxpayer so that they can participate in helping us save the schools? Could the average homeowner afford a dollar a week? Or 25 cents a day, about $50 a year to save the schools? We're still rolling the mill rate back. We'll roll it back no matter what council decides. Why not not go too far and offer the citizens the ability to help along with this so the Board of Education sustains what they need? Thank you.
So, I just wanna be clear. We're gonna do what the council decides. We're not gonna roll it back regardless of what the council decides, but we're gonna do what the council decides because the council was elected to speak for the residents. Number one. Number two, I understand that this is a difficult situation. No one could have imagined COVID-19, no one, if you listen to everything that was being said on the news when this happened in Wuhan, I don't think we were thinking that we would have been impacted so much. I don't think we would have been thinking that we would have been on lockdown where our businesses can't function, where people were sent home or furloughed or lost their jobs. So we are definitely in difficult times. And my phone has been blowing up. No one wants taxes, people can't even afford a dollar for taxes. So let's be mindful that there's people out there that's hearing this meeting, and they are not happy with what's going on right now. So please, let's be very careful how we're handling this meeting and how we're handling our residents, please. Counselor Wong? Go ahead, ma'am.
There's a lot of older comments that I have, and I probably will not say many because we've been saying kind of the same things or the trend of things. Let's see. Carrie, just rainy day fund, later in the meeting, if you will, could you just kind of talk about that for the residents that are online and give us kind of a ballpark of what's in there, what happens if we take money away? I think a lot of people would appreciate to understand what that means. So that was just a comment, you don't have to do that now. Let's see. So while, while I don't agree with a lot of, or some of, how the school and the town operates, and I don't agree with all the operational decisions that both entity makes, I understand that my job as a council member is to do the work. And while we can't control what the BOE does, and we can't control what some of the things that Robert does with his administration, it's our job to ask the hard questions, and it's our job to get some of those answers. We have to continue to ask those questions. And I don't like being, if you will, checked when we do ask those hard questions. Well, you know, I don't think it's more so micromanaging. Again, we are elected to, for, by the people to ask these hard questions, and we, the people deserve answers. Whether or not it's within our power to decide, it's not, in some cases. We have to, also, I'm a parent, I'm also a taxpayer, and COVID-19 hasn't minimized the needs of the school. It, it hasn't. And the scenario six, the 5%, is essentially half of what the board asked for initially. So I just wanted to point that out. It's not, it's nowhere near what they need to operate. Maybe they have some savings because the buildings are closed or whatever the details are with that. But scenario six, again, is half of what they asked for in the beginning. So even with that amount of funds, to most of my peers' points, they'll come back later on if they need to. Even though the chair said they probably don't want to come back, and I wouldn't want them to come back either, they should be independent. And I don't think that that's going to be, as far as the ceiling, I mean, the amount that they initially asked for, that would be, that would be up for discussion as far as raising the ceiling that soon. But again, this is half of what they asked for, referring to scenario six in the beginning. So maybe if my peers are up for a discussion, we find maybe a Goldilocks zone between the Board of Ed funding between scenario two and scenario six, when, when we get down to that discussion. I don't know, maybe more towards a 3.5, 4%. That's a happy medium between the two scenarios. I know that's a whole nother scenario, but just to put it out there. And then my last comment was just with Robert's. So Robert, you said a lot, thank you for those comments. I didn't quite understand, I mean, what you were getting at. But could you provide some details? There's really no details in that statement regarding what you mean by line item cuts and how that will impact administration and the collateral damage that you were referring to. So if we have like examples, then we would know to stay away from that or, or let, you know, the town manager kind of handle that down the road. But I just couldn't quite follow because there was a lack of detail in that statement. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Wong. I'm referring to, while we're looking at scenarios, we're talking about cuts maybe that we would make to training or cuts that we would make to travel or education or, yeah, I think that we've, we've actually, we planned on providing some support to council to help them with, with remote meetings. And we've got those cuts in there too. If, if we, we pass a budget and we eliminate that funding or we condition the funding on those lines, it's much like the funding that we had for this year that was approved for additional personnel and IT, but we were never able to access. The, we had a full FTE approved for IT. We never got that person in the office, and the pandemic hit, and, and here we stand with needs for IT. And if the budget had been conditioned on an amount of savings, we might have met that in any number of ways. But the budget was actually conditioned on putting a person in a chair. And what that did was it kept us from putting that person there, and so we were less prepared for where we are today. We have the creativity to undertake work that will help optimize our personnel deployment and how we do our work. And if council presses us for cuts, we have ways to meet those cuts. But we don't necessarily have to cut them out of a specific line. And I think if council comes to us with a number and says, we don't want the taxpayers to pay any more money, here's what we want to go to the Board of Education, come up with this number so that that can happen, we can work in our departments and come up with that number and help council meet its goal. And in doing that, we still retain degrees of flexibility and degrees of freedom to work on our administration without things like the example with IT.
So can, can you tell me why the IT position wasn't filled, Robert?
There was funding provided for a full FTE to add to IT, but that funding was conditioned on a report coming to council on organizational structure and performance.
Right, so it wasn't the fact that the money wasn't there, it wasn't the fact that council didn't give, give directives or permission to hire someone. That was predicated on something else, is that correct? Is that correct?
Well, I think, I think what I saw in the notes was there was some question about the content of an organizational report that might suggest where funding levels needed to be in each department. And council was waiting on that.
I believe the council, I believe the council approved that position when it came up. I believe that's what council did last, is that what, is that what happened, Carrie?
They approved the, the position hinge on the results of the Matrix study.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Curtin?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the comments from Counselor Wong. It's, I'm here and I, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong. I've gone through both scenarios, right? And I'm here with barebone cuts. The reality is, we as a town pay really well, our employees as a town. We're probably at the highest level when it comes to the pay scale in a town of Bloomfield. The reality is, I don't see any barebone cuts in this budget in, in, in scenario number six. Could someone please explain to me why we cannot go with scenario number six? And still, like Council Wong said, we meet the school in the middle. We're not giving them 9.78% that they're talking about. So I will let Carrie go ahead and I can comment on that, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I'm just gonna let, Counselor Politis, I'm gonna let you go. And I do understand that we wanna talk about scenario six. Counselor Goff, is it okay after Counselor Politis to have scenario six, and then you can go? Sir? That's good?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Politis?
Hi, Counselor Politis speaking. Yeah, I just wanted to go on record and kind of just clarify that. I kind of knew the answer to the question I was asking, that can people tolerate? And I knew the answer was really no. But I just don't see a scenario where, without really gutting the operations side of the budget, to do a, a massive funding for the Board of Education without increasing some, increasing taxes. Because you have, you have a bond, increase in bond funding of 1.3 million. I know we're gonna try to negotiate the other, the other fixed costs in that, or MDC and such. And, but that's, right now, it's 6.70 or something thousand dollars. You have almost $2 million of increased fixed costs to the town that they're already trying to cut out of the budget. And then to, so any increases from there are either gonna come from the rainy day fund or they're gonna come from the operations side. So I'm just concerned, just very concerned about, you know, going all in upfront. Again, I keep reiterating the same, the same points. I just, I'm very hesitant to go in all, all in upfront and then have absolutely nothing to stand back on in a year from now when we sit here and go, okay, how badly now do we have to go into the reserves? And how badly is this gonna affect our bond rating? And, and those kind of things. I just, I think we need to be ultra-conservative with what we do this year under the, under the guise that, yeah, we are probably gonna have to go and give the, the Board of Education more money. We may have to give operations more money, we may have to do this, we may have to do that. But at least we'll have the money in the savings account to do that as opposed to have spent it already. Thank you.
Carrie, I'm gonna just go ahead and ask you to go through scenario six, please.
Sure. Okay, can everybody see my screen okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, scenario six keeps a lot of items the same, reduces a lot of the items the same. I'm just going to address kind of the changes between scenario two and scenario six. The first one is, we're going to increase the reduction for town council contingency and STEM by $25,000. We are also eliminating the Juniper Lane and Wadum repairs, which is $16,000 and $25,000, which are both found in the construction and progress budget. Department reductions change from 1% to 2%, increasing the reductions $150,000. The hiring freeze is a full year instead of a half a year. So it increased from $280,000 to $560,000. The other changes are obviously the decrease in Board of Ed funding is reduced. It's only $2.5 million in this scenario. And the rest of the changes are, we're going to increase the use of fund balance by $150,000. We're going to increase the debt service assignment by $50,000. Add residual fund transfer by $50,000. And the last change is reducing the $75,000, $75 million figure for exemptions and appeals. We're gonna change that to $70 million, which adds about $200,000 in revenue, projected revenue. So that is the scenario six in a nutshell. It reduces the mill rate just slightly to 34.99 mills. 35.01 mills is, you know, what the target is to roll back taxes for a revaluation value increase of 7%. So we can discuss questions on this scenario?
Someone has said the most vulnerable on each end of the spectrum, on the age spectrum should be at the forefront of our community's mind. Keep our elders, keep our elders in mind as well. Carrie, can you please stop sharing?
Oh, do you want me to touch on, on fund balance real quick, Suzette, before we open the floor up?
Yes, please.
Okay. So currently, our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, AKA our rainy day fund, we have a, as of June 30th, 2019, our unassigned balance was $18.7 million. The, I am projecting it to be about $19.2 million by the end of fiscal year 2020. Our fund balance policy states we need to stay between 15% and 20% of the current year's operating revenue, budgeted operating revenue account. So I did calculate that out. We can, based on the budget that's before you, an estimated budget, we can reduce the rainy day fund to 13.47% and be in compliance with our policy. We are, each scenario is, is projecting using over $2 million to balance fiscal year 2021's budget. So if, if we take that into consideration, because I don't feel as though fiscal year 2021 will provide a surplus and will be able to contribute to our rainy day fund. I mean, I hope that's the case, but I don't think it's gonna be the case. We're gonna have a balance of $2.6 million remaining until we hit that 15% bottom threshold that we can apply to for future year budgets to balance.
Thank you. I think I have been very consistent in our fund balance and making sure, because we are having a rainy day now, but a tsunami might be- because we are having a rainy day now, but a tsunami might be on the horizon. And we need to make sure that we'll be able to withstand if something else comes up. I'm going to have Counselor Merritt and then Counselor Curtin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think back to the board budget, which is the biggest variable here. And I would like to remind people of past years where we have heard the boards need for more money, or more money owes. And I understand why they're asking for it. And they do, in a sense, need it. But then, then after we pass the budget, they come up with their own budget. And the council is usually aghast at what it really is, because they can do whatever they want with that money. And I've heard that they intend to give all their staff and teachers, all of them, all the increases that they would normally give. And I think that's rather, I mean, while we're cutting COLA on the town side, that becomes unfair, because they are paid very well, thank you, all of them. And I know they feel deprived that they haven't gotten the increases they thought they should have had in prior years. But still, everything I've ever seen says that all of our staff is paid comparably better than surrounding towns. We do pay well, and our schools pay especially well, both staff and teachers. And I'm putting enough money with 3% into that budget to hire the new teachers they want. So we're not putting any hiring freeze on them and on their budget. But they're also intending to give all those increases. So that's something that I, and we can't stop that. Because no matter what budget we give, they can do whatever they want with it. So I think it's important that we not throw all sorts of money at them upfront. And anything more than 3%, I think is throwing money at them. They have no idea how much they're gonna need. And by law, they can take whatever they need out of our reserves. So it becomes, it's ridiculous for us to give them more now. They can take it anyway. So why are we doing this? Doesn't make any sense. If we go and tax people in town who have lost their jobs or taken pay, there are very few people that are better off than they were last year. And to be able to fund increases for teachers, I mean, we all understand we need more teachers. And we all understand that we need staff. But I don't understand why we need to pay them more. When, and basically, that's what we're doing when we give them these bigger increases. So I think everybody should be aware of that, that we have no control how they're gonna spend the money. I've heard many Boards of Education make all sorts of promises and needs and then turn around and done with what they feel like doing afterwards. So that's the way that the book is. So I would just remind people of that. Thank you.
Counselor Curtin?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. To Councilman Merritt's point, if that's the case, then every single year, that would be the reaction from the board. So I think his comment, to me, is irrelevant, because the reality is, what he's saying is, two years ago or a year ago, he was willing to give them an increase under the same notion that they're given pay increase. So I think that point is irrelevant, but I'm just gonna move on from there. We're making a lot of assumptions here that we have no support for, and that, to me, is frustrating. The reality is, I'm looking at scenario number six. We barely made any big adjustments, except for the Board of Ed giving them half of the 9.78%. So I don't see the major difference between scenario number six and two. Listen, I'm gonna, once again, I support scenario number six. I want to move on from here, because it seems like we're going around in circles and we're saying things that are not factual. There's no evidence of this. Based on the budget that I saw for the school board, there's no increase for teachers or staff, any ludicrous increase that I see within the budget. I didn't see that, the increase that I'm hearing tonight here. So once again, I know there is a need within the schools. Our job is to make sure that we fund the schools so they can function. We know for a fact that this year, it's a major challenge, and we need to do that. But to me, to make comments and say things that there's no basis on, I think it's unfair to the teachers and the school system. We're talking about, I hear people bounce around with equity inequality. And it's not, it's not the same thing, guys. It's just not. Okay, the reality is, our kids are behind. This pandemic is gonna push them even more. And for us to cut the school budget and put them at a deficit is unacceptable at every level. And I can guarantee you, our taxpayers in this town who have kids or non-kids, because I know that for a fact, because during election time knocking on doors, folks without kids wanna invest in our schools. They wanna see a better school system. And I think it's important to make sure that we meet those needs, especially during challenging times. And I believe that we need to do that. We're not giving them 9.78%. We're talking about a 5.1%. And scenario number six will still get us to the point where taxpayers would not have to pay any increase. And we're not dipping in crazy to our fund balance. So I'm a little lost. I keep hearing the town bare bones. There is no bare bones. We haven't made any cuts. We still have the 449,000 that's sitting out here with possible capital projects that we could defer. We didn't factor that in. That's still there. So the reality is, to say that we're making a town bare bones, I think that's unreasonable. I think 2% across the Board for Department, I think that's a reasonable number. So I'm a little confused with the dialogue I'm hearing in regards to the actual data that I'm looking at in front of me. I think the point of contention here is the school board, once again. And it's not a time to play the games during this pandemic that we know there's challenges. So that's my comment for the end of the night. I don't think there's anything else that I could hear that would change my mind. I think scenario number six is a plausible scenario to move forward. And I hope my colleagues would support that and support the schools. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Counselor Goff. I too am frustrated, and I will talk more about that in a second. But I do want, I do want to deal with some facts, because facts need to be brought into the situation. First of all, I'm glad we finally did go over scenario six. And let me, let me just give quickly the calculations that I made in terms of scenario six as scenario two. And these are essentially Carrie's calculations, just put together a different way. As I said before, for scenario two, as it stands now, with the Board of Ed getting 3%, the, all the other, all of the other pieces, that is, the town and all of the ancillary services that it has to pay for for our citizens, things like sewer service to the MDC, things like the health district, which it seems to be a little bit important now during COVID time, the increase on all of that front to the town, the operations the town and the fixed cost the town has is just under 0.75%. So on scenario, scenario two, as it stands now, we get 3% for the Board of Ed and 0.75% for everything else. And again, if you take the MDC out of that, the town actually turns negative. When you do the same calculation for scenario six, where the Board of Ed gets 5.1%, the town operations, including the fixed costs of the MDC, comes in at minus, minus 0.99%. So just under 1%. And I don't need to, I don't need to comment, but obviously, since the MDC is getting a 1% increase roughly, then this is gonna be negative, much more negative for the town. I can't, looking at these numbers factually, or looking at this, have any way of saying that scenario six does not, you know, I think scenario two already cuts town services to the bone, or cuts town fat to the bone. I cannot in any way look at scenario six and not say that is not worse. It also uses more fund balance. It also reduces the contingency for the, not much, but it does reduce the contingency for the taxes. I've been a big proponent of looking that, looking at that assumption. And after we went, after we got information from the tax assessor, through the finance director, of what those, of what the already filed appeals are, I'm not sure 75 million is not the right number. In fact, I'm not sure it might not need to be higher. 70 mil, I mean, 75 and 70 million equivalent about. I appreciate the comments about the fund balance and where the fund balance is now. I agree with Finance Director. I don't expect us to be running, to be having any kind of increase in the fund balance next year. So based on the comments she made and how much we're taking out with this budget, I think we would end the year approximately 16.7 million. That's assuming we don't have to reach into the fund balance. And I want to have that rainy day fund balance there. But I also want to be clear, and I think I've made this point a lot, and a lot of people are. I'm hoping that we, if we do need to reach into that fund balance, we can use it for capital-type items, one-time costs, not costs that are gonna recur year over year. Because if you start using the fund balance for operating costs, then all you're doing is kicking the can down the road. And I don't think we can do that right now. So, you know, it is frustrating, because these are the facts on the table. Are we, you know, would we like to live in a world where the original budget we saw from the town manager, which was around a 10% increase on the town side and a 10% increase on the Board of Education side, and where we can fund projects like lights on our soccer field? Yes, I mean, let's face it, if we could fund all of that, we could obviously do things. But we're in a situation now where the town has made most of the hard choices. It is now time for the Board of Education. Oh, I did want to make one more comment. I'm sitting here, obviously upstairs, I'm not gonna take the time to go get it. I believe, and I may have these numbers backwards, but I believe what was stated in the Board of Ed's budget book is that I believe certified staff or unionized staff, the increase next year was 2% in salaries, and for the uncertified, I believe it was 1.7%. That's clearly stated in the budget. I may, you know, I didn't look it up, but those are facts out there. We, you know, I agree with Counselor Merritt. If we expect these kind, if we as a council, we expect our town management to come back looking at changes like that in our side of the, our side of the House, I also expect that to be reflected in the Board of Education's side of the House. I think that's pure, straight equity. So at this point, you know, I don't know what else we would, you know, I would like to see us move on. I will support scenario two. As I said, I would like to potentially reduce the Board of Education slightly in that and increase the town portion. But I think there are enough counselors who are dubious about reducing the Board of anything below 3% that I would support that. And I guess I would, how would you advise us to move on, Madam Mayor?
Um, so, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, guys. I can't keep up with all the question and answers. One of the things that I liked, Counselor DeLorenzo, Counselor Wong, Counselor Calhoun, and probably myself, would like to see a, I think Counselor called it a, what did you call it?
Hybrid.
Counselor DeLorenzo called it a hybrid, but Counselor Wong called it like a Goldilocks, something. Something like that. Is there a way that we can look at maybe a 3.5 and a 4%? For the board?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just, can I just comment?
Can I finish?
Oh, you can. No, I just, I just wanted to say how you can do that.
Yep. Yep. If we can look at a 3.5 and a 4%, I think we are probably split. I think the majority is at a 3%, a 3.5%, maybe even a 4%, nothing less than a 3%. So if we can look and see what that does for us, trying to be as fair as possible, I think that, once again, once we've decided, then everyone will have to figure out what they do with the budget that they're given. Last year, we were in a better place and we gave the Board 3%. This year, we're in a worse place and we're gonna give the Board 3%. That may not work, right? And we are well aware that once we give the Board money, and just like in every other year gone by, we can't tell the Board how to spend their money. I do believe that since Chairman Harris was on the call, he heard that Counselor Merritt was concerned that we are doing a freeze on our end as far as COLA and everything else, and it's not fair for the Board to be giving those out. I think Counselor Goff said the same thing. So we're hoping that, you know, everyone will be taken into consideration of the things that were said here tonight. I'm just trying to see how we can be a little bit more fair and also still try to provide some help. I think it's a little, I think it's bad precedent to say, "Oh, you know, let's give you 2 cents, and if you need $50, just come back more. Come back, because we have the $50 to give you." I want us to try to be as responsible as we can now in hopes that they won't have to come back, because we don't know what we're going to face down the road. So that's my suggestion. Let's go ahead and, go ahead, Counselor Goff.
Yeah, no, I, I understand where you're coming from. And I think, you know, that's something we can compromise on and reach agreement on. It's very easy to do. So if you take scenario two as it now stands, and I think if you took out the hiring freeze as it now stands, which is the half-year hiring freeze, which was worth $280,450, and you replace it by the hiring freeze full year five positions, that's $560,967. That's about an extra, well, it's about an extra $300,000, which would be roughly half of a percent. So if, if, if what we need to do is reach a 3.5% for the Board of Ed and leave this, leave scenario two roughly intact, that would be one quick, easy way of doing it. So I throw that out there. You know, I, again, I think from an equity point of view, we have, it is very difficult, the damage I think we are doing to town operations if we go much deeper. Thank you.
So thank you very much, Counselor Goff. Carrie, so if we can get a scenario with a 3.5% and a 4%, we can see where that leaves us. I just wanted, and I'm going down this road, because I have not heard, besides Counselor Curtin, anyone else say that they could support scenario six. I could support scenario six. And just, just listening to the conversations, the majority of the people of the council did not want to go up to a 5%, even though that was half. So now we're trying to come up from, come up from 3% and come down from 5% to see how we can meet in the middle so that we can get a decent budget on the table and move forward. So if we can get a 3.5%, Carrie, and a 4%, still having everything equal, hiring freeze, no COLA, all the stuff that we took out, we're gonna keep those things out and see where we come out on that. Counselor Curtin, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, for the record, I would like to see who doesn't support scenario number six. I mean, I hear a lot of luster in, but I would like to see, for the record, who don't support number six.
Okay, so here we are. We currently, we currently have two scenarios. I'm gonna put everybody's hands down, because y'all not hearing me. We currently have two scenarios on deck. We have scenario two and scenario six. I would like to see the hands of those that support scenario two. One, two, three, four, five councilors support Scenario 2.
So should we simply adopt Scenario 2?
No, no, that was, Counselor Curtin asked a question and I, we answered that question.
Who was those council members just, once again?
So there were five, there were five councilors. There was Counselor Goff, Counselor Mann, Counselor Politis, Counselor Goff, Counselor Mann, Counselor Politis, Counselor Merritt, and I believe Counselor Calhoun. That was five.
Okay, thank you.
That was five. So now what I'm going to do, once again, I'm going to ask Carrie to give us a 3.5 scenario and a 4% scenario, with everything being equal, Carrie. Okay? We're going to go back to the, um, we're going to go back to the capital projects. We have not gotten an answer from the town attorney on that. Counselor Politis, is your hand up? Yes, no? Hand up? No, hand down. Carrie, Counselor Calhoun, I'm sorry, hold on, Carrie. Is your hand up, Counselor Calhoun?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, again, as you requesting from Carrie, those additional scenarios, I would be mindful and I would possibly look to change my option if those things weigh out better.
Okay.
If one of those two options weigh out.
Okay. Counselor Wong?
Yeah, for the record, I, again, I would support kind of a Goldilocks scenario between 2 and 6, not necessarily leaning more towards either one of them. So that, that was my point. I don't think I could blindly support either one of these scenarios today. I think a happy medium in the middle would be more my way. So I just want to put that on the record.
Yep, that's what we're trying to get done. Deputy Mayor? You got to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to call attention to some of the hyperbole and the posturing that's going on here. It doesn't help this process to make joke of the fact that everybody is trying to do the best they can to figure this out. It's not an easy, easy project. It's not an easy solution. And so when one counselor says something-
Who was making jokes, sir?
You want me to name him?
Who was making joke? Well, I'm-
I'd say joke.
Okay, so can we just? Okay.
I said, I verbally called him-
Okay.
I think, I just want to just finish this. I just think we need to be more respectful of each other. We're all in this working hard together to come up with a solution. So we all have, maybe we each have a different way of how we want to go, which level we want, but it doesn't mean that you belittle the other person for their opinion or say that they're just, uh, I forget the word that was used before, frustrating or blustering or whatever. You know, and you ask for facts and, and there are facts, and you ask for general, and you give generalities too. We're all guilty of some of those things. So let's be a little bit more respectful.
Okay, all right, little lost, but okay. Um, Counselor Politis?
Hi, Counselor Politis speaking. One thing, um, in the two scenarios that we're going to come up with, I'm a little, a little concerned with in, in 6 is that we, um, we take the grand list reserve from 75 million down to 70 million. Um, where, and I'm concerned about doing that because I think that, you know, as we set a mill rate and taxes go out, there might be, you know, appeals going on further. Um, and I think that, I think we need to leave, again, this is another flexibility thing. It gives us more flexibility to work with the numbers unless we have some certainty as to, that we can keep it to 70 million as opposed to 75 million. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Counselor Goff and then Counselor Curtin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Counselor Politis. I agree with him completely. And I, I thought I alluded to that. I think, I think that Finance Director Rowley included that in part of that scenario because I had been pushing for a while, just, I didn't have any background on that assumption. And I thought a $75 million assumption, whereas last year, for example, we held 16 million. Uh, I thought that was a huge jump. But as I think the council, I think everyone was copied on the actual analysis of the appeals that have been filed already. And I agree completely with Counselor Politis that, that we need to keep that, that assumption conservative. And as I think Finance Director Rowley pointed out, that it's, it's not, you know, it's not that, it's not worth that much money. I think about $200,000. So there's not going to be a problem, as I said before, with taking some of the facets of Scenario 6, putting them in Scenario 2, and coming up with a 3.5 and a 4%. So a 4% Board of E, Board of Education allocation. Uh, I think we just need to go back and see, you know, what we think of those ones. Thank you.
Counselor Curtin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to also comment on the, the point that Counselor Politis made. That's a very good observation. I just want to go back to some comments that I, I heard. The reality is, we are elected to make decisions and at the same time, we have to be accountable for our decisions. That's just part of this process. So I don't think we should be frustrated. Every single one of us have a right to vote on things, but there is accountability and the voters need to know exactly who did what. And all I needed to know is to point out exactly who support what. So it wasn't a point of trying to call any of my colleagues out. It's what we signed up for. This is part of decision-making process and we have to be accountable to the voters. So I just wanted to make that clear. Um, I'm going to move ahead and wait on, once again, you know, I don't want a Monday morning quarterback, but I think everyone really need to do some research to understand what we're dealing with. And I understand from the town's perspective, and we made sure that we didn't cut back on services, even though with the pandemic, there may be potential services that we may not use in the fall with, and I've said this like a broken record with the governor, uh, still warranting that seniors over 60 should stay in and not still come out. So I think there's going to be a lot of savings across the board. Uh, we could, we could project, and there's a lot of unknowns. But I do believe that the school system is going to be, and I'm only saying it based on my own experience, okay? I'm not, this is not hyperbole, this is not making anything up. I am living it every single day, knowing not only what I go through as a parent, but interacting with all the parents within the community and some of their challenges. Some parents within our community don't have the luxury like myself or my wife who could actually be at home monitoring our kids. There's a lot of parents who are actually essential workers who actually have to go out there and work. So those kids, there's no oversight. So what I'm looking at, from a more practical standpoint, there will be challenges on top of the challenges that we currently have within the system. So that's the point I'm trying to make with, in regards to, you know, the commentary and regards to the school and making sure that we're careful how we move forward and how we fund the school. This year, more than any other year, I believe, is a need. So I think it's easy for us to sit here and play around and I understand some of those intentions are pure. Uh, but we have to really think about our most vulnerable, um, uh, asset in the town at this point with what they're currently going through. Think about some of the trauma some of these young people are coming back into the system with. Think about it for a second. They're going to be coming back in, they're going to be needing extra help to get through this. Uh, so I think there's a lot of factors that we can see and I think it's difficult. But I know for a fact that the educators are the ones who are experiencing it. They're dealing with some of the students. Uh, some of the students, even though they have a laptop or a Chromebook that they receive, their internet service is still not working adequately. There's going to be a process through the summer. Trust me, there is a cost associated with this and it's not going to be easy for the school system. I can tell you that much. It's going to be tough and we have to brace ourselves. I just want to make sure that our children has a fighting chance, knowing exactly where they are outside of this pandemic. They came in at a disadvantage and this is just putting shift in them more backwards. I just want to make sure that we think about that when we move forward. And that's what it's staying, this is real. It's not talking about a police cruiser. We're not talking, we're talking about impacting our future generation here within the town of Bloomfield, and that's important. Our kids are our future, so we have to invest in them. And I believe that we haven't done that for a while in this town and we could go back and debate that. But I believe we need to make an, an effort to do that and it's important to do it now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, uh, once again, Carrie, thank you so very much for the work that you have put in thus far. If you can just go back, get us two more scenarios, a 3.5 and a 4%, um, with everything that has been said, all the freezes. I do believe that most towns have frozen everything on the town side. Um, so I don't think we're asking for anything that other towns haven't been asking for because, once again, these are unprecedented times and we are trying to do the best for our residents, for our students going forward, realizing that we're in uncharted territory and there's a lot ahead that we don't yet know, right? So if you can, um, if you can go ahead and do that for me, um-
I just want to clarify one, one thing before we go forward, just so everyone's clear. The current CIP balance, the $449,000 that, you know, I was asked to identify and bring forward is not going to have a direct impact on fiscal year 2021's budget.
Correct.
So maybe we can, you know, keep that amount and at the next Finance Committee meeting, talk about, you know, how we want to transfer it for it or keep it separate. But I just wanted to let you know, you won't see it in any scenario because it won't have a direct impact on the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we, we can, um, we can take that up in the next Finance meeting. Uh, Counselor Curtin? Sir?
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if it might be possible for the Board to get a message that we'd be interested to see if they could take on more austerity measures that the town is taking on equal to the town employees.
Uh, Chairman Harris is still on the Board. Chairman Harris?
Yes.
Um, so I'm not sure how much you heard of the conversation. Um, we have been told that there's increases going on across the Board for the school. And Deputy Mayor Mann just asked if the Board can hear and understand where the town is and if there's any other thoughts, concessions. Deputy Mayor, I'm probably not saying it properly. Go ahead, sir.
No, I thought you did very well, Madam Mayor. What we're looking for, Mr. Harris, is to see if we can get some more information from the Board as we're looking at a couple of other scenarios to see if you can help us out here. This is, uh, uh, obviously requires both of us. This is the last chance we'll get to. We're not actually getting into your budget, but we're trying to give you a number that works for you. But we're asking if you can help look through your, your budget to see if you're, there's, there's more money being paid in the COLAs and benefits and travel and, and all those other, you know, other things that the town is really cutting to, cutting to bare bones. If you could be of some help and give us some other information that might help us in our deliberation.
I can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I can pass the message on to Superintendent and to our Chief Operating Officer. But I do know all of our teachers, you know, administrators are all unionized and they are all in, uh, whatever year, one, two, or three, not two, not one, but either two, three, or four of their contracts. You can always go back and ask to reopen. But when you reopen contracts, those of you that are familiar with union negotiations means you're opening up the whole contract. So there's certain problems that will occur. Uh, but I will present it to them. I can't get any quick answers in the next day or so. Uh, although I do know that the head of the Teachers Union is on this call. So she's listening to everything that's going on. Now, where we do have some control is the non-certified staff or the non-union staff. There we have control and we can dictate a little more. Probably dictate is the wrong word. Uh, but we can control salaries and not present any COLAs accordingly. But there's a inherent danger in trying to do that with contracted, unionized staff because this is the BEA, which is under the CEA, the Connecticut Education Association, which is under the National Education Association, the NEA. So, um-
Do you think-
Chairman-
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
We do. So would you, do you think it's possible then that you can make the recommendation of the non-certified staff and the COLA or the freeze for this year? To provide some relief?
As soon as I get off this call, I will present it to Dr. Thompson and Mr. Guzman.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I think under the circumstances, any union discussion would be appropriate too during these times because if there's a reduction in payments to the Board, there may be a reduction in union members because we won't be able to allow those positions anyway. So realistically, we're all in this together and that's why we started out. So everybody takes a big-
You know? So it's Barnes and Peter, the PayPal. Yes, I can do it.
Thank you.
I'll make the attempt.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Um, there is a comment from Damon and Delvine Coachman. Good evening, my name is Damon E. Coachman and I reside at 41 Tamarack Tribe. I want to say thank you for all that you are doing on behalf of the residents of the town of Bloomfield. I know that this process is not easy. Thank you very much, Mr. Coachman. I do hope and pray that all the residents share that same sentiment. Um, Carrie, once again, thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. Um, and, and I know that India wanted us to pass a budget tonight. India, we still have work to do. Um, Carrie is going to be able to go back and give us two more scenarios. We will discuss it. We, once again, thank you for the backup that you have provided about what would be cut out. And I, once again, I think that's important as we go through this difficult situation. Um, but I do know one thing will happen is the council will pass a budget, a fiscally prudent budget. I do know that that will happen. Out of all the conversations, out of all the frustrations, out of all the time that we take, we will pass the budget. And the budget that we pass, I believe, we will do so with the best interest of our residents in mind. Counselors, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the town of Bloomfield for going through all this information. If you are printing out paper, thank you for all the paper that you're printing out. Thank you for taking your time to, um, review the information so that we can make sound judgment to our town staff. Thank you for your support. Um, and with that being said, we do have a budget hearing on Thursday starting at 6:00 PM. I am going to unmute everybody. Can I please have a motion on the phone?
Madam Mayor, before you, before you do the motion, can you just give, can you just give an update for the audience? Uh, what is the, the next couple of steps for us to get? So for folks who are listening in, you said Thursday, but just-
Thank you. Thank you very much. Because there was a request that was made that once we do come up with the scenarios, that the scenarios be made public so that people can see them before the budget meeting. Um, so what will happen now is, uh, our Finance Director, Ms. Carrie Rowley, will go back and she will create some magic and try to come up with two different scenarios. One where we give the, the town, one where we give the BOE a 3.5% increase and one where we give the BOE a 4% increase. The, um, on Thursday, the council will come back and deliberate and we will choose a scenario on Thursday. Um, once that is done, there will be a public hearing, I believe, on the 28th.
Town Hall meeting.
Where is that? I'm sorry, a town hall meeting on the 28th where, once again, it will be open to the public to come provide input on the budget that the council is trying to pass. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer questions. But at the end of that meeting, if all hearts- if all hearts and minds are in the same place, we will pass a budget on that night. Um, I don't think I forgot anything. Okay, so with that, once again, I believe Counselor Wong had made a, um, motion.
To move.
Second.
Okay, and we have seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold up, hold up, hold up. There is a comment. Don't craft a budget based upon the needs of the Board. All right. Um, with that, everyone have a pleasant evening. Good night. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.